I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, October 29th, 2018. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans on video or audiotape in this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for weekly briefing? Jamie?
Jamie Goodwin, Channel 18 Station Manager. I have some unfortunate news. A longtime volunteer for Channel 18 in the community center, Paul Cofflin, passed away on Thursday. He had over fifteen years of volunteer service for Channel 18. He hosted our community journal show, which is weekly. He's just going to be really missed. He was a very integral part of what we did every Wednesday and Thursday, and it's just unfortunate.
Thank you very much for letting us know, Jamie. That's really unfortunate. We thank him for all the service that he gave to the town. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Hi, Carolyn.
Surprise. Hi, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. Just wanted to let everyone know that on Wednesday at 4:30 is the safe trick-or-treating inside the community center. Everyone is welcome. We have been very fortunate and got wonderful donations from so many places. Star Market stepped up today and gave us a great big donation of candy, and the bank, TD Bank, Frisbees. There's just so many people to thank, so you will see our great thank-you letter coming through you to recognize all of the kind members. And when you're coming, if you just want to bring something to drop in the "Support Our Troops" box, that would be really, really nice, because that is -- needs to be mailed out on November 14th, so it's coming pretty quickly.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Specifically, what sort of things are you looking for there?
So, we do have a whole list, so it's a lot of toiletries, playing cards. We liked handwritten notes to send to them as well, socks, hats, lip balm, things like that, really, some inexpensive things. It's on our website, and I have a flyer. I'll leave some in the back of the room as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comments and announcements?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just wanted to let everyone know that tomorrow evening, we are having the Harwich Center Cultural District Stakeholders Meeting, and it will be held at the Cultural Center at 6:30 until 8:00, and it's in the auditorium. If you did not get invited, please, I may not have everyone's email, so please come if you do think that you'll want to be a part of this.
Thank you, Cindy. Good evening.
Hi, Peggy Rose for the Harwich Historical Society. Just want to put in a plug that this Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock, is our annual holiday pie sale. We are still looking for a few bakers. Any takers? Pies can be dropped off at the museum between 9:00 and 3:00 on Friday. The sale starts at 10:00 Saturday morning. And also, want to let you know that the First Congregational Church is also having a craft fair that day, same time, so caught sort of a prelude to the holidays. You can come and get some pies, and then you can go across to the church and do some little Christmas shopping.
Great.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comments and announcements? Ed?
Yes, on November 12th, at the Harwich Cultural Center in the auditorium, at 7:30, the Harwich Cranberry Festival will be presenting a concert, "Colonian." It's a folk-rock band from Sweden.
Awesome. Great.
Quite good.
Okay. Anybody else for public comments and announcements? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Ed?
Yes, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move adoption of the items there on, including the minutes of October 9th, 2018, regular meetings. Approve the Town Administrator's Recommendation on Perks Entertainment License. Approve the Road Race Application from Cape Cod Irish Pub for August 3, 2019, and we'll hold the approval of committee appointments to take up separately.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. On to public hearings and presentation. Sorry.
Don's got to finish the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were doing them single, sorry.
Yeah.
I was trying to blow by that.
We all know how I feel about the dates on these things. Let's see here. All right, so what did she do? Yeah, that's important. I'd like to make the following motions. Mike Ulrich to the Harwich Port Parking Committee, full ad hoc business member, term to expire May 15th, 2019. Al Donahue, Harwich Port Parking Committee, full ad hoc resident member, term to expire May 15th, 2019. John Mahan, Harwich Port Parking Committee, full ad hoc resident member, term to expire May 15th, 2019. Joy Jordan to the Youth Services Committee, full member, term to expire June 30th, 2019. Ginny Ewitt, Harwich Center Initiative, full ad hoc member, term to expire December 31st, 2019. Yeah.
[inaudible]
Exactly what he said. To the Historic District Historical Commission Associate Member, term to expire June 30th, 2020. And that's it.
Nope.
Oh, and Brendan Lowney for the Affordable Housing Trust, full member, term to expire June 30th, 2019.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a question, a clarification. There are two members on here that are on hold. What's that mean?
It means we haven't picked them yet. It means that we're still interviewing. There's open applications, and we're still interviewing.
So, what's it?
No decision made.
Okay.
So, do we still have a --
We have vacancies in the Harwich Port Parking Committee, and we, I don't believe that we have the Affordable Housing Trust anymore, so hold is --
Will evaporate.
Will evaporate. It's not a, it's not a hold.
A full house now.
So, now we have everything.
It will be, yes.
A full committee.
Okay. That's, that was my question. Okay. All right, so.
It's a full house on the housing trust.
Yeah. Which beats an inside straight on the board.
I'll just make a public comment at this point on John Mahan. I interviewed John Mahan, and it was for a resident member. It's been brought up that he works at a business in Harwich Port, but he is not being picked as a business member.
Okay. Okay, so we've moved and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Okay, now we'll go on to public hearings and presentations. Annual meetings, Cultural Council.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Would you just state your names?
Tina Gaines, Chair of the Harwich Cultural Council, here to present my annual report or annual meeting. You got a copy of my report, if I may. I just want to highlight a few items, and then I'll take your questions. For the viewing audience, the Harwich Cultural Council is a town-appointed committee. We are one of 329 local councils who are charged with allocating grant funds for community-based projects, events, programs. And annually, we are funded through three avenues. One is the Massachusetts Cultural Council gives us a pot of money every year, an allocated amount. The Town of Harwich, at our annual meeting, we get an amount of money there too, and then we do our own fundraising. So, that's just general comment. Our committee, we have a maximum of nine members. I think we got this hopefully squared away last year. We currently have seven active members with two vacancies, which we are actively recruiting. And I want to recognize just our members. Of course, I'm the Chair, Treasurer Joan Seketti, Roseanne Shapiro is our Secretary, Roseanne Clark, Sharon Mitchell, Lorraine Bosco, and Roseanne Donahue. And I want to publicly recognize Debbie Ferry, who served for six years, and because we're one of the few committees, we have to follow the state rules, and we can only serve six years. So, that's two three-year terms, and Debbie has fulfilled those two terms. So, thank you, Debbie, if you're listening. She gave us six very good years and actually headed up our grant reception every year, so we're going to miss her. And speaking of the grant reception, we hold a grant reception every year. This year was May 31st at the Harwich Cultural Center. It was the first year we've done it there, and it was wonderful. And I also want to, we just closed our grant application process. So, every year, we open up on September 1st, and it's open until mid-October, on the 15th, however that falls. So, six weeks, we open up for local grant funding. And this year, we had 25 applications with grant funding requests of $24,018, and we only unfortunately this year have $9,000 to give, so we're going to have our work cut out for us. We're going to start in our next meeting in November, and then December, we'll go through all the grants, and we'll begin to kind of make some decisions for this year. Usually, in years past, we've given anywhere from $9,000 up to $15,000, and that just depends on what we get from the state, what we get from the town, and what we do for our own fundraising. And we do award local grants, and this is, these are smaller grants that can range anywhere from $100 to $1,000. So, these are your smaller cultural grants. And we usually award them in three categories: arts, humanities, and interpretive sciences. So, we'll be working on that, and we'll have our grant reception later this year. I also want to note, we changed our meeting venue to the Harwich Cultural Center for this year, which made a lot of sense, and we're loving it. And one of the things we realized is we actually have people showing up for public comments, so this is really exciting. We've not really had that, at least since I've been on the council, so we were very excited at our September meeting to have some public members showing up, and so we feel like the visibility piece of us meeting there will open up a lot of doors. One of the highlights for 2018 was the signing of the Cultural Compact Agreement, of which we did right in this room, February 26th. The Harwich Cultural Council partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, the Town of Harwich, and the Massachusetts Cultural Council, and as a result, we are working, as Cindy noted earlier, we're working on finalizing and applying, well, applying for two cultural districts, one in Harwich Port and one in Harwich Center. And we'll be meeting tomorrow night, as Cindy noted earlier, for Harwich Center. Also, as part of the Cultural Compact Agreement, we were awarded a $10,000 grant, of which a lot of that is going to support the cultural districts for signs, maps, a website for both of the cultural districts. And then we have money going to the Harwich Cultural Center, which we're very excited about, and we're working with Carolyn on that, and Cindy and Charlene are kind of heading all that up. And I think that is all I wanted to touch on. Visibility was a big focus for us last year, and I think the Cultural Compact did that. The other part of visibility is, for the first time ever, the Harwich Cultural Council has a logo. And what we noticed is across the Commonwealth, a lot of our, the cultural councils had logos, and we did not. So, when we were doing the grants, and we just didn't have a logo to share with anybody for the visibility piece, so we reached out to Cape Cod Tech. They have a wonderful graphic design internship program, and we had a student, Hannah Capra, who agreed to come on. This was her internship project, and we gave her a little bit of what we wanted to have, cranberry red and ocean blue. She presented us with six designs, and this is the one that we chose with a few tweaks. So, we're very excited. So, this is a student project, and we recognized her at the grant reception this year. Of course, graphic art, so it fit within our framework of what we do. So, you'll be seeing this. So, everywhere we go, you're going to be seeing this. So, there we go. And that is my report for this year. Any questions?
Thank you. That was excellent. Any questions? Larry?
Just one.
Yes.
The meeting, you mentioned Debbie Ferry having to move out because, can she move back in after a year or two years?
Yes.
Is there some state rule on that?
Yes. And the rule for the state is we have to go off for a year and come back. Roseanne Clark did that, for those of you that might know Roseanne. But yes, if she chooses to do that, she can go off for a year and come back and apply. Yes.
So, when will we see T-shirts?
We're, that'll be next. Yes, we're working on it. Visibility is definitely the focus, because the Harwich Cultural Council does some really fantastic work. And when I took over his chair, I just felt like a lot of things were kind of in a closet, so to speak. They did a wonderful job with the grants, but I felt like there was more we could be doing, and I'm just really proud of the work we did in the last year with the Cultural Compact, with this wonderful logo, with meeting at the Cultural Center. So, visibility was a big focus for us last year, or in 2018.
Michael?
I have none. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you. No other questions?
Nope.
All right. And I guess, and I also wanted, just real quickly, we're all current on our open meeting laws and all of that stuff. Everybody, you know, we're good, as far as the attendance, too.
Thank you very much for all your hard work. Don, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, you're going to say something, Don?
I was until she passed me by.
Oh, okay.
No, Tina, terrific job. And what I want to recognize is how all of these disparate elements are coming together, and it's just like amazing things happening between the Cultural Center and the Cultural Council, and the work that you're doing with the grants, Charlene, and Cindy, I hadn't gotten there yet. But that's the whole point, is that it seems that this is becoming more than the sum of the parts, because it's just all coming together.
Right. Well, the timing, and the timing was perfect. We've got the Cultural Center, we have the initiative, the Harwich Center initiative happening, so the timing, I don't know, it was just all one big synchronicity. I think everything's coming together. These ladies are wonderful to work with. It's a collaboration, and I think there's a lot we can do in the town all over the place. This is just an example.
And I would note that it's becoming harder and harder to give a pat on the back here.
Anything else? Ed?
Thank you very much.
See you next year.
Thank you very much, Tina. Thanks for all your hard work. And we'll move on to the Brooks Academy Museum Commission. Good evening, David.
Hi. David Spitz, Chair of the Brooks Academy Museum Commission. We have been very active. Of our five members, three of us are here tonight, Sandy Hall, Peggy Rose, myself. And yes, we've done all the posting amendments and swearing and all the business stuff. It's been a busy year. The main thing is, there was a 2014 or 13 CPC-funded study that was supposed to look at the condition of the building and make recommendations as to what improvements should be made. That money was sitting until this year. In June, we hired Berto and I Works from Boston. They've also done a major project for the Transportation Authority in Woods Hole, which I found out last week is under quite a bit of controversy, but they've done a very good job for us. They started work in June, and they gave us a nice report in August, which, we've been including the Historical Society along with the Brooks Museum Commission as stakeholders in this project. And they gave us, after listening to us for a couple of months, they gave us a very nice list of recommendations, which included excavating under the full foundation of the building. It included moving the entrance to the historic location under the columns at the north, the north of the building. And it included a redesign of the floor plan that would have allowed a lot of space for storage of historic documents, for research, and so forth. That was the good news in August. We got the price tag in September. I'm not going, I'm not going to share the price tag with you. I don't think it would be responsible to go forward at this time. So, we asked some tough questions, and we are going back to some basics, which includes taking down some walls and using the existing basement space to the fullest extent, including adding a climate-controlled area for storage. So, we'll be able to get a decent amount of storage out of that. And the other part that we are looking at and not going forward on quite so quickly is the entrance at the north that we think will be a much more usable location, and Lula, which is some form of low-impact, low-use elevator, which would go from the basement level up to the second-floor level. The price tag for those combination of things would be approximately $450,000. We're looking for outside grants to help pay for that. I think that's a big chunk for the town to swallow at this time. We've gone forward with the CPC application this year for the basement work, which will be a little over $100,000. And in addition, we are looking at several state-level grants to try to do the rest, but we have to finish getting our final report, and so we'll be working over that over the next year. That's been the main, oh, the other thing from that report is, other than the CPC grant for the study, there's also a leftover CPC grant from 2008 for exterior work. Ed, I know you were involved in that. And we now have a list of some very specific items, probably the most important of which is doing a better job of getting water away from the building, because they've pointed out to a number of deterioration areas that need to be addressed. So, we're going to try to go forward and use some of that CPC existing money on that. Those are the main elements of what we've done. We also found out that the 10-year-old agreement between the Town of Harwich and the Harwich Historic Society, that agreement was entered into in early 2008, so simple math means we need to get it renewed. And we would like to work with the town administration or the appropriate select board member to renew, probably with some minor amendments, that agreement. That's my report.
Great. Thank you, David. Ed, you have any questions?
Yeah. I know from that 2008 grant application to the CPC, one of the projects that was considered in that process was, on the Sisson Street side of the building, there is the row of windows, and then there's the door that they put in when it was used as a classroom, and which is not in good shape. It was to replace the door and reinstall a window to that facade. I know at the time, I did up a cut sheet and cross-section and specifications to get an estimate for a window to replace in the same style as the existing windows, but I don't know if it's ever been done. And I know at the time that the storm windows were placed on the building, a window, a storm window was purchased for that opening, too. So, you may think about doing that.
Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Don?
Nope. Terrific job. Thank you, David. Great job. Thank you, David.
Nice job, David. I do have one question. In terms of the storage, as I recall, you digitized a lot of the records a few years ago.
Say that again.
You digitized, put it on the, digitized a lot of the records a few years ago?
Well, that was before I was involved.
I was just wondering if that affects the amount of storage?
With the newer, the current museum director said that --
I'm just trying to figure out the tie-in between the two.
Yeah, she had said that they actually had applied for some CPC money, which, under the thinking of the CPC committee at the time, was not approved.
Okay.
So, I don't think that's been done. They've done some work on photographs, but not that.
Okay.
They digitized, I know the photography collection, but that still doesn't, you know, just, you know, you still have the historical photos to keep in good order. The digitization means that when somebody wants a copy of a, you know, of a family picture, then they can do it easily.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Peggy, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, just, the photo, the digitizing of photographs is an ongoing project. We've done a whole lot of them, but there's still more to go. And just to make a pitch, as our storage and, we, we don't have room to store a postcard at this point. We are bursting at the seams. So, if anybody's got an idea about leaving their Aunt Lily and's wedding gown to us, it's not happening. At this point, but we are, we are bursting at the seams for storage.
Okay. Thank you for all your hard work and for working on the storage issue, because obviously those are important artifacts for the town, and we appreciate it. Thank you. We'll go on to the Bylaw and Charter Review Committee.
Good evening. Good evening. Sandy Hall, Chairman of the Bylaw Charter Review Committee. We are a five-member committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen for three-year terms, and right now, we have a full complement of members. You added Carol Thayer and Tina Gaines, the unenthusiastic Tina Gaines, to our board, and we have a great working committee. We also have Anita Dusset and Deb Cementa on the board. Everybody has done their ethics. Everybody has been good about attendance, so we're, it's a good working committee, and we are going through the charter and looking at the bylaws. The 2018 annual meeting included only one charter proposal, which was the wastewater bylaw, which was indefinitely postponed, so we're anticipating that it will be coming back this year, probably with a redo. We also reviewed changes for the 2018 town meeting, which included reconciliation of language between the charter and the bylaws regarding the number of members to various boards. And I think we have that pretty well straightened out at this point. We have a provision of members to serve as liaisons, of Board of Selectmen members to serve as liaison to appointed elected town agencies instead of as ex officios, and there's a few other items on the list, which I won't bother you with.
Okay.
Okay. Going forward, one of the things we understand the Board of Selectmen may wish to do is to clarify language regarding ex officio appointments, to ensure that those appointments don't outlive the terms of the people who are on the boards that are sending them. So, we imagine we can look forward to having something from you on that this year. And also, just given that the clock has already started, excuse me, in the run-up of, to the 2019 town meeting, just a reminder that we have deadlines, you have deadlines. We need any articles that you receive by the deadline within two weeks, so that we can set up our own hearings and what have you.
Right.
And if you think of things along the way that you are, you know, wanting to talk about, either through Don, or who is our liaison, or otherwise, we'd like to hear them as you contemplate them. The last thing I really wanted to talk to you about is the, something that came up last year, and that had to do with distribution of ballot questions adopting charter changes. We discovered very much at the last minute that where the changes had usually, had historically gone out as part of the warrant, the warrants aren't going out to every household anymore. So, all of a sudden, oops, we haven't fulfilled that obligation. So, the question becomes, do you begin to send a warrant out again so that that's covered, or do we have to send these changes out on their own, which is going to require some money? We don't have a concern about it for this year, because we don't have any charter changes coming up on the ballot, at least as far as I know at this point. But that's really something we need to talk about. So, that's it.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions, members of the board? Larry?
No. Nice job.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed? Don? No? Don?
I'm sensing a homework assignment here when she said, "You folks need to work on language for the ex officio."
Don, thank you, Don.
I thought I mentioned it.
Right. And then, obviously, addressing any kind of budget issues going forward on ballot changes and getting that information out. Okay, thank you very much, Sandy. Now, we will go on to new business. Confirm the appointment of Emily Mitchell as Council on Aging Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the boards are aware, we had a departure, and we did a process. The process that we utilized is a process that I brought from other places, and which I think is a good cross-section of the community. So, we had an interview team that consisted of myself, my assistant, representative from the Friends of the Council on Aging, Jack on Aging, Jack Brown, Harwich Fire Department, Leanne Smith had volunteered at the, at the behest of the chief, maybe. But I thought that was a good idea to have that section of the community be represented. Richard Wastak, who is here this evening as the Council on Aging Chair, and then Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director. We did receive, I believe it was 18 in total. We had six people that we wound up interviewing, and we unanimously, after doing the interviews, selected Emily Mitchell, whose materials was presented to you. One thing interesting, in my last community, we had a requirement in the bylaws, that they said if you have the opportunity to hire someone that's local, you should do it. And, you know, I always thought that was a, kind of a good provision. We don't have it here, but certainly to take somebody that is, has some passion for the community, that grew up in the community, and has the skills and ability to fill the job, is kind of a win-win. And so Emily Mitchell fills that role, and I think she will do an outstanding job and put her name forward as a new department head for the Council on Aging.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions?
I agree. I'm pleased to ask a local. I was also, it's good to note that we had six applicants that, I think, made the final screen. And the ratings are all fairly cool, so they're high all. It's always good to get a number of good applicants for a position. So, congratulations to them.
Michael?
I'm good.
Okay. Ed? Don?
Not so soon on the congratulations. I'd make a motion that we approve upon the recommendation of the interview committee and the town administrator, the appointment of Emily Mitchell of the COA Director position.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Emily. We're really proud of you. Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Okay. Update on Fire Station Two and overview of pending change order. Chief Clark?
Good evening. As I promised you that I would keep you up to date as best I could on Station Two, and that's what I'm doing. So, first and foremost, I want to let you know that the progress is proceeding out there. Not quite as quickly as I would like, but I tend to be a little impatient on some things, anyway. But we're moving along. They assure me that we're not behind schedule. I think the, it's important that the, we get the steel up and the, and the walls up so that they can work inside without dealing with weather. But that's on them. Before you, in your packet, I, I'm going to assume you have it, a pending change order. It's an electrical change order. Essentially, talks about things that were, I hate to use the word missed, but those are my words, "Did you miss these things?" And the answer was, no, we didn't miss them. But prior to bids being awarded, there were addendums put out. And some of those addendums were late coming in, so they will require additional monies. We had requirements from Eversource that we did not anticipate, and they're not negotiable. You do it their way, or you don't get power. So there's a cost associated with that. I did ask for specific costs to each one of these items. I saw those costs, and they were rejected. I see, unacceptable. I'm not gonna stand before you tonight with what they had presented for costs. So they are gonna be re-tabulated, and we'll, I'll come back with what I believe is a reasonable cost for some of these change orders. Also included, just as an interest of what we go by, is a four-week, sometimes a four, six, and even a six-month look ahead. But I thought I'd just give you an example of how we, how we look at the schedule, and how I work with the contractor, Mill City, to make sure things are on time and done correctly. Any questions, if you have any?
Does anyone have any questions? Larry?
I don't.
Michael?
Just thank you. No one's paying attention.
Ed?
No, I, we ran into the same issues with Eversource building the high school. They tell you at the last minute, "No, that's not how we do it, and you do it our way," or "We stop."
That's right. Very frustrating, but that's right.
Don?
I just want to make a comment, that I wish that every project went forward with as much diligence as you folks have been pursuing this.
And I witness daily the work out there. It's moving right along. And I, too, work with the utility companies, so I understand. I mean, Eversource is Eversource, there's nothing you can do. So, we look forward to when you come back with the numbers.
I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Okay. The cable use policy, the first reading.
I'm going to defer to Jamie.
Jamie, okay.
Can I come check your microphone?
You can. You want to come check? Jamie Goodwin, Station Manager. This kind of came about because I spend some time, I don't want to say stalking, but maybe perusing other government station websites, just to see what everybody else is doing, you know, keep up to date, make sure I'm still on top. I noticed that a lot of the Cape Towns had a cable use policy, and we did not. So then I started doing some more research into what other municipalities are doing, just to kind of write up a policy, a guideline for the public or people that don't know that, you know, our Channel 18 is a government site channel, it's not a education channel, and it's not the public access. So it's just a couple of different guidelines, just to answer people's question. So, this, I wrote this in November of last year, and I kind of, you know, lived with it for a while before I hitched my name to it. So if you have any questions?
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Don? Oh, Ed, go ahead.
Well, just a suggestion in item one, under modes of broadcast, you have live broadcasts, and you indicate this will include broadcasts of the Board of Selectmen meetings, and then other public meetings. But I think one of the, the named events that, public meetings is town meeting, should be.
Okay. I can add, add that.
It's our principal legislative event of the year. It ought to be.
Sure. And just that, that one item is, the Board of Selectmen meetings obviously take live coverage precedent. So as we go into further down the week, the program schedule fills up, and we can't make everything live.
Yep.
There's one thing that I, I may change, just because it was the previous station manager's policy is under G, item number three, DVD duplication. We've been charging a $15 copy fee per DVD, and in my opinion, that is a little outrageous and outdated. That was when DVDs cost much more than they do now. And I haven't sold a DVD in probably two years. So, to maybe encourage people to come down and get DVD copies of public meetings, I suggest that we make that a $5 fee.
Okay. And so you'll be coming back to us with your revisions, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Don, did you have any?
Nope. Looks good to me.
Michael or Ed?
No, I would support the $5 and just give her that as direction now.
Yeah, I think that's great.
It's the first reading, so any edits we make, we should make now.
Okay.
Any other? Nothing?
No.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks a lot, Jamie.
I just want to mention that Charlene did help me do the first draft of this when she was Assistant Town Minister.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Dissolve the Municipal Revenue and Economic Development Committee. And this was the committee that was formed, God, it was a year ago? Two years ago? Yeah. Okay. Michael?
I moved that we dissolve the Municipal Revenue and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Don?
Yeah, I just want to point out that we haven't gotten any candidates. And it's a commendable purpose, but it's kind of like a company that makes a product, and there's nobody there to buy. In dissolving this, it doesn't change our opinion about how important it is to have economic development. And Mr. Clark provided us with an alternative mechanism at our, either the last meeting or the meeting before. And so we're still gonna be pursuing mechanisms like this. But the reality is, on a volunteer committee, it's kind of hard for them to develop opportunities. It's more a question of being an inviting place to set your roots and create a business. And if we do some of the things that the town administrator suggested, then we can be doing exactly what the intent of this was, anyway.
Right. Ed, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we'll go on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have several things tonight. I will keep it brief. But I went to, this afternoon, to the Carp Barn Project to see that. That's nearing completion, so we have substantial completion. The site work, actually, we're gonna do in-house. So our, our folks down there will be doing some of the site work, just plantings and things like that. When you have an immaculate course, it only makes sense to use that talent in-house. So we are, that's kind of the next stage that we will be working on. Operating budget instructions will go out probably tomorrow. We will attach the Board of Selectmen's voted policies there, or the goals you have included in that. We did receive kind of a late word today, that there is a hearing tomorrow, or a, I don't know if it's formally a hearing or not, on the seasonal liquor licenses to annual. So if anyone wants to submit comments, I don't think that it's necessary to drive into Boston. We'll try to send an email in for the staff.
Right.
Through administration and, and Madam Chair, through, if you're okay with that, with your blessings, that obviously the town wanted these things to be converted from seasonal to annual, and that they are supportive of it. Also, just on the capital budget, the capital, the Capital Outlay Committee has gone through each of the items. There's a meeting on Thursday to try to set some prioritization. That is Thursday at 4:00. They are looking for my recommendations, so I will be working on getting my recommendations to them at that meeting and presenting that. So that they are continuing to do some diligent work. We actually did go on a boat ride to see some of these things. You know, in particular, one of the, the jetties at, I think it was at Allen Harbor, Allen, Whichmere Harbor, Allen Harbor. And I was shocked at, at how poor that jetty is. So it was kind of interesting to see it up front and see the significance of that on the waters. I appreciate the harbor master taking us around to, to show us those things. That was last, their, last Wednesday. Oh, no, I'm sorry, last Thursday that that tour occurred. Later on that same day, DHY, they had a meeting in which folks from the Mansfield, Mansfield, Foxborough, and Norton got together to talk about wastewater issues and their experience. We have, that was filmed over in the Town of Dennis, and that will be on our, or is on our website. So if you go to the tab, if you're unable to make that, a meeting last Thursday, you're more than welcome to watch it. And that is under the tab on wastewater, just for folks that are interested. And then, just lastly, I am officially a Harwich resident. So I have a house full of boxes, and I now live in Harwich, and it will take me probably two or three weeks to dig out of the boxes. But I'm very excited to be here, and my family's excited to be here, so.
Welcome. Officially.
Officially. And that concludes my-
So where are you voting?
I don't know what precinct I'm in yet.
Most people talk.
I did change my registration, so I'm gonna vote here.
Good.
Okay. So, any Board of Selectmen reports? Larry?
None.
Michael?
None.
Ed?
On Wednesday, I'll be heading up early to Boston. They had scheduled the bimonthly meeting of the Massachusetts School Building Authority for 10:00, but because of events that are happening shortly thereafter, and they're moving it earlier. So, we'll be, instead of leaving here at 7:00, I'm gonna be leaving here at 5:30. But this is a meeting where they will approve the final audit of the school, high school building project, and the final settlement of their payments to us.
Great.
So I wanted to attend the meeting and thank the authority and their staff for the enormous amount of work they put in on our behalf.
That's great. Thank you, Ed. Don?
Nothing for me, other than the, ask the burning question, and it's on the minds of everybody out in the community. Are you in the sewered areas or not?
I am not in the sewered areas.
No abatements.
Okay. And I just want to remind everybody, Carolyn reported earlier tonight, the Support Our Troops deadline is 11/14/18, and the information for what's needed for the troops is on the website. Also, that the Harwich Cultural Center Stakeholder Meeting is tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Harwich Cultural Center. And we also have the annual holiday pie sale for the Historical Commission, 9 to 3 Friday, and then 10:00 on Saturday, the Craft Fest, Craft Sale also at the First Congregational Church. And I think that covers it. Never mind, congratulations to the Red Sox.
Enter the chair for the time.
Look at that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.